That's great, but they are two separate things. And when the buildings are finished, you're going to see there are two separate buildings, two separate things. The communication needs to be the same way for that.
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm kind of neutral on this one. I, I think you gotta sit in the chair of the community. And what the community sees, because you're obviously, you know, very ingrained into the library, but from the community side, I'm not sure if they differentiate. You know, a rec program from a library program. And I think there's a lot of, a lot of synergies and it can make a lot of sense to, you know, have, you know, an integrated approach to it.
Well, I don't, I, I'm sorry, I might need an integrated approach. It's the advertising of things where it's like, here's the thing. And you don't know that that's a library program as opposed to something else. So, you know, and where is it going to take place? That's, that's my only thought.
Yeah, no, I, I, I hear where you're coming from.
I, I, let me be clear. I'm not saying I don't think recreation department is important. Let's, I have, I have put six children through this. This city through the public schools K through twelve, through twelve. And every one of them has used the recreation department. It has been fabulous, but it is a different, it's a different entity. I have grandchildren now that are, are using the recreation department. I want to see it successful, but how about putting some emphasis behind getting, getting a, a, a board together? We used to have a recreation commission. You can't even get volunteers for that. What I've been told. Is, is the city really, you know, how much value does the city put on it if you can't get somebody to volunteer to be a part of it? And I, I just don't think the library should have to shoulder all of that responsibility.
Lois?
Well, I agree completely. I feel, you know, the recreation department is wonderful, is fine, but I'm here and I'm for the library first and foremost.
You know, I worked on the Blue Ribbon Committee to study the recreation department. Ken was on that, Steve Tall, a lot of good people. And we started in 2018 and we continued through the re-envisioning process for the rec department, which continued just before the pandemic began. And we made recommendations to better coordinate the programs between rec and library to avoid overlap. But we did not recommend joining the departments. And I, I agree, we need to identify which programs are from which department. I thi- I think it's needed for the library's identity. And I think it's an opportunity to also promote a really good image for the rec department. I think it's great when you plan joint activities and advertise them as such, like I'm aware that the Bunny Stop. You mentioned some library staff is helping with that. Maybe it's a joint program. And if you get the San Marino Fire Department and police guys to come over, the kids are gonna love that. So it really could be joint from the city. But I do think there are ways even, you use some icons in the Community Services Guide for Twitter and Facebook and other things, and even just icons of library and rec. I think might be a good way to distinguish between the two departments. I, I think it's important to. Any other comments? That said, let's go on to the quarterly work plan. Oh, Steve?
Oh, I do. Yeah, sorry, Liz. Just going back for a second, in the, in the notes about partnerships, the friends haven't met since November. I, it, that's a little shocking and disturbing to know they haven't met in over four months. I understand their bookstore is not open. My question is, who's handling their online bookstore sales? Because I think we made what $76 in all of January. Who's, how is that being handled? Who's doing that? Does any, Irene, do you know?
Rebecca? Um, so right now it's being handled by, um. Well, it's interesting. It's being handled by a part-time employee, Eric Gomez. If you're familiar with Eric, he does a lot of the posting. And then I know that Cindy Chan from the foundation assists as well.
I, I, I assumed as such, I, I just, and I noticed in the, in the opening of tiers that, that the suggestion of, of dropping off books, oh, no book donations are permitted until the, until everything's done at the end. I'm just surprised that this isn't an opportunity where people could still drop off books. They could sit for a couple of days, get processed, and then could be resold. I mean, this stuff could, could be happening. But again, I don't think it's a necessary library function. It should be a friends function. And I'm just surprised they're not stepping up to try and generate funds this way, since they can't meet physically in a bookstore.
And it's, um, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They're so impacted.
Mayor, oh, mayor had to leave. Thank you. Sorry, Irene. I'm sorry.
Um, the, the bookshop is totally impacted with books right now. And so they, they have no way to move them out. So we just can't take any more books for now, until we open it again.
Okay. I'm, I'm just, yeah, so, so I, I just, if we have all these books, why aren't they, they're, they're not trying to move them online to sell them online? I mean.
They are.
Okay.
It's slow, but it's happening.
Okay.
Irene, do they, does, do the friends need help in shelving books? Is that what, what? Is, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking about the reopening process. And if they're going to need some help, um, is there a way that, that they can, that we can help them out? Or that they, you know, we can get some publicity generated to, to get them some help? Uh, I know we have quite a few people in town now that have been vaccinated and might be willing to actually go outside their, their house and do something.
I will offer that to them.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, you know, give them whatever support we possibly can. They've been so good to us for so many, so many years.
Yes, they have.
Can we let them use the bathroom or even the main room at the San Marino Center to sort out their books and everything? And even leave it there as they're doing the sorting to get them out of the bookstore?
I don't think that's the problem. The problem is you can't, nobody can come into the store to buy books.
And as Steve was saying, for the online piece?
Yeah, they're doing all right with that. It's just slow. We can advertise it more though.
Shall we go on with the quarterly work plan? Irene, Brian? Senior tablets? You're on mute, Brian?
I'm sorry about that. Um, yeah, so actually some great news. So the feds last night allowed us, uh, I'm sorry, the feds last week, I've had too much coffee already this morning, I apologize. They last week granted approvals to purchase 10 iPads for the upcoming senior tablet program. And as you know, working with the feds, there's a lot of things that you've got to cross off and a lot of requirements you need to meet. But librarian Russell has been great in moving that forward. Right now she's just working on procuring the equipment. And every time she has to procure equipment, she has to check in with the feds. That's a process. And then she's also working with our IT provider to install the device management software. The goal is that, you know, when you get an iPad and you present it to a senior, that all the apps are preloaded. So they know exactly how to use Zoom, social media, and then also the library's e-resources. So that's exciting. Right now we are talking with a provider to provide that actual, that, that in-person experience. That's probably not going to happen until I would say in late May, just because we're still trying to get through the protocols with the county. But we felt that this is a program best for in-person learning and not to do it virtually. If, if someone could do this virtually, then why have them do a training? And that's how we're kind of thinking about that. So we are, at least that's one thing we can cross off. And librarian Russell, well, I'll ask that she provide kind of a little walkthrough at the next meeting that shows the interface and everything like that. E-library cards, that's right now very hot where you can get an e-library card where you don't need a full library card. You can just do an e-library card to access the library's e-databases. And right now our current library software does not allow us to do a, um, an e-library card component. However, City Librarian McDermott has figured out a workaround based on what Arcadia is doing. So Irene, if you wouldn't mind sharing that information?
Sure. Um, we have our ILS, our integrated library system online called Koha. Well, Arcadia has a similar ILS. It's a, it's a Koha.
Irene, your sound is breaking up.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, that's better.
I don't know what's going on. Um, they have, they have Koha over there, but it's a different company. And they figured out a way around it. What it is, is fill out a form online that's very rudimentary, has name and that kind of thing. And once we get that form, we will issue a library card based on that information. But it's an e-library card. In other words, you will be able to check out books. I would tell you, come in and provide the rest of your information, proof of address, that kind of thing. So it won't happen instantly, but it will happen within a couple of days that you'll be able to use our e-resources. So that's the best we've been able to do. And we're going to try to do that this week. Any questions?
And then our, our last discussion is about cost savings and looking at, um, the, 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 the library's Flipster and Overdrive platforms and kind of what we're doing. And since we have librarian Russell here today, um, I think it would be best that she kind of talk about how we're looking at all these resources and kind of what the plan is moving forward, just to give you kind of a taste for what we're going to be discussing at the next board meeting. So take it away, Rebecca.
Hey, so I'm looking at um, the use for a lot of our databases, particularly our Gale databases, which we combined spend about $15,000 for five different databases a year. And then you look at the user ship and for each database, some of them haven't been used all year. Some have only been used a handful of times. Um, and so, given this situation and understanding that a lot of people can go to Los Angeles Public Library and access these databases. So it's not like there is going to be a need left open. People will be able to get access to these if needed. Um, I'm trying to see how we can shift around our, um, databases and see what we can give more access to that our community would be interested in. So one that I'm really excited about that we just signed up for is Press Reader. And if you use Press Reader before, it is access to a ton of magazines, a ton of newspapers. Most significantly, it's access to LA Times. And I know before we've had LA Times, but it is a, the user experience isn't good. It's as if you're, it's only text only. You're not able to see any pictures. With Press Reader, you're getting LA Times as if you're going to the website itself. It is, you know, front page with all of the images and everything like that. Um, so I'm really excited about that. And so, but since we're shifting money around and getting that, that means we can get rid of Flipster, which we use for just, I think, 12 magazines total, and get rid of the LA Times access we did have, which was through ProQuest Online. And by getting rid of both of those and signing up for Press Reader, we're actually cutting our spending in half. Because Press Reader only costs for the price of one of those. Um, and we're getting so much more. And we're trying to do more of that with getting rid of Gale. We're looking into Hoopla, which as mentioned earlier is, um, it's a pay-per-use model. Meaning you pay for each use. You don't have any holds. So everything is always available all the time. It's books, movies, TV shows, um, I believe audiobooks as well, comics. A lot of digital content. Um, so you're able to get access to all of that and there's no hold. So we're looking into that and a couple of other things. But a lot of changes are happening and we're really excited to see what we can offer the community that will get just a lot more value. So.
Any questions, um, for the staff on this part of our report? This is the staff notes, right? Yes.
I'm sorry, Chair, before we go on that, can we, would you mind having Rebecca talk a little bit about some of the successes with her adult programs?
Absolutely. I'd love that.
Sure. Okay. So what have we had? We had, well, we had House Lab, Ken, which I know some of you attended. It was great. Yeah, we had more visit the, or more attend the online lecture for Howes than sometimes Howes gets in person. So we found that to be a huge success. Um, we attribute a lot of that success to our marketing and how we're just getting the word out in so many different ways. Specifically, I know we had sent like a personal email to a lot of people that have attended past programs, informing them about this future one. I know we sent that huge email blast out to the community. So the numbers are great there. We've also been doing some take and makes. So for St. Patrick's Day, we did a, like a glass etching with a, a little beer stein. Um, it was, I, I made 40 kits for 40 people. I think all but three of them were picked up. And then I have 20 people on the waitlist, which I don't know if I'll be able to serve a, a fraction of those. But, um, yeah, a lot of interest in the adult take and make kits, which I was very pleasantly surprised about. And then we're just getting ready for next month for, uh, more lectures. We're doing a mixology one. And then for the take and make next month, we are doing a bird kit or a bird feeder as well. So a lot of fun, exciting stuff. We're trying to transition into what it's going to look like in person, because I know pretty soon we're going to be making that shift. And so we're just trying to, um, see what that looks like. Right now we've had a lot of successes with, um, virtual performers or virtual lecturers that you wouldn't ordinarily be able to get, because, you know, they're from far and wide. I think Leslie Goddard, who did the Betty Crocker, she lives in Chicago. Um, you know, so yeah, there's all these different people that you can get from far and wide, because, you know, we're all virtual. So now we're just trying to regroup and see what it'll look like once we reopen and have in-person again. So.
And then Irene, did you want to add anything?
Well, I was just so pleased with House Lab's show. He, uh, is, as you know, is a very distinguished professor from U S C. And he talked about the different variants of the COVID virus. And of course, then it just came out that all these wild variants are coming at us. So it was very timely. And I was very pleased. That can keep my report.
Would, would you mind, uh, updating the board on some of the programs that Tara's working on?
I know she's working on, uh, some more take and makes and, and continuing with her storytimes. Rebecca, do you remember what else she has going on? Tara?
Oh goodness, what doesn't she have going on? Because, well, she has her super storytime experience, which, um, I believe her, her first, um, instance of that was last week, but it was a huge hit. So everyone gets like a shaky egg and a scarf and all that stuff that you would normally have for storytime in person. They're able to pick that up and do it at home. Um, she's been really successful with her. She partners with the, um, what are they called? The TikTokers to get a lot of the, the craft stuff put together. So I think she, for her luck of the Irish, take and make, which was a craft, she had like almost 100 people picking those up. So she is very successful in those, um, take and makes. And then she had her teddy bear sleepover. I don't know if we've talked about that yet, but it was so cute. She had a bunch of participation with that. I think like 20, 25 kids dropped off their little teddy bears. And then, you know, you take pictures of them around the library. So I know she has her grossology kits coming up and her Earth Day kits coming up.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure exactly the rollout of those, but she's doing a whole bunch. And, uh, yeah, it looks very exciting.
And we've been talking with, um, uh, we've been working very closely, Tara and I, to, to make sure that the youth, uh, take and makes or the programs, that they're not just tailored really at, at toddlers or girls. Um, that's why we're having the grossology kit. I'm not sure what's going to be in it, but I have boys. And so, you know, if you can talk about boogers or farts, if there's a way to do that, that will be relevant to kids, as gross as it may sound, that brings some relevance of the library to youth. So we'll look at that and we'll have more to report on the grossology kits. But it's, it's my understanding they're already accounted for. And I believe we're going to be starting to disseminate those next month. So that's all I have to report. And I think that kind of concludes the report. Um, Chair, if you'd like us, we can definitely go over any of the staff notes if you, if you care.
Are there any, um, well, are there any questions or comments regarding the quarterly work plan? Um, I just would, in publicity, um, I, I encourage you to really look at the coming months and have a real focus. We have so many things going on that I think some, at times, I take what Mayor Ud said about something, um, think about it from the community angle and getting bombarded with the social media. I think there's got to be a focus, whether it's summer reading program is a focus for a month, get your library card and library card month is a focus for the month and so forth. And that, that might guide what goes up top in the, um, City Manager Thursday Report. What goes up top or what you pay the $40 for, um, for the social media. And I hope you put in your reimbursement request for that, Brian. And, um, but those kinds of things and to really have a calendar that looks at what are the, what's the big main thing that we're going to be looking at.
For our, our, our big e-blast next month is going to be, uh, because we saw a lot of success with how to do curbside pickup. We're now focusing every month to do a, a, a more of an educational e-blast. So right now Rebecca and I are working on how to use overdrive. And so we'll have that out in the next couple of months. We just wanted to make sure that before we advertised overdrive, that we weren't going with a different provider. But now that we're not, um, we'll, we'll get something out shortly. And then one of the big discussions I'm having between recreation and library right now is there seems to be some duplicity with, with what they're providing a way of services, especially with children. And so we're really making a marked effort to align what type of programs or services we're offering. If it reflects the mission statement of the library, or if it reflects the mission statement of the recreation division. So, um, I just want, I don't want to duplicate services. So that's really our major thrust. And then really, again, we're looking to consolidate efforts. There has been some discussion right now with recreation, for example. And, uh, library looking at, can we start doing the drive-in virtual storytime hour with kids just to get them out of the house? And we've already got the equipment where they can, you know, use their shaky eggs and they can tune the FM transmitter. And we could print out big books that we can flip for them. So we're looking at how do we get the two divisions together to provide more robust program?
Any questions or comments on, on the staff note section of the report? Irene, I have one question. Um, it's regarding an email you sent on Serving With Purpose, the conference.
Yes.
That's coming up. Do you want to tell us about that? And can we also invite the friends and the foundation to attend with us?
I will invite them. Um, every year, uh, it's kind of out in the, in the Empire, Ontario area. They, uh, they put on a, a Serving With A Purpose convention. It's a one-day talk. And this year, of course, it's going to go virtual. The emphasis this year is on how to do some fundraising in the virtual space. So I think it's going to be good. It's in, in June. But if you would like to go, please send me an email by Wednesday and I'll get you signed up for it. It's free.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Steve?
I just had one comment. We didn't really chat about it, but I thought it was a smart idea to take those Dr. Seuss books that are no longer being published and put those aside. Smart move. I, I appreciate that thinking upstream of what someone might, might be doing there and, and absconding with those. So good, good, good thinking there.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's go number two, the fiscal year 2122 budget update.
Um, yes, uh, so I, I touched on it briefly in the previous report, but right now we are putting together the budget. We have until the end of this week to put together the library budget, at least a preliminary budget that then we would share with the city manager and the finance director. We have asked for that item to go to the city council on May 9th. That way we have a little bit more time to prepare our budget. But we should, uh, have a preliminary budget ready for the board's review at its April meeting.
So Brian, is it confirmed that the city council will look at it, um, at their meeting Friday, May 7th, rather than their meeting on April 30th?
That's what we're asking for right now. It has not been confirmed, but I have a feeling that they're going to want to look at community services as a whole. And that's probably why they'll want to push it into, uh, the later meeting, once everything else is taken care of with other budget items.
So the reason that I ask is so that, um, we get to see that budget proposal before it goes to the city council. And that will work well, because we can see it at our regularly scheduled meeting on April 26th. And then it goes on their agenda, um, May 7th. But if something happens that they want to look at it at their April 30th meeting, looking at it at our April 26th meeting isn't ample time and we would need to schedule a special meeting.
Correct.
Can you let us know in the next week or so? Um, hopefully the city manager can confirm that.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on the budget? So we'll see it next time. Um, are there any public comments, um, in the waiting room at the end of our meeting, Irene?
No, there aren't.
Okay. Any other last thoughts for the good of the group? Thank you all so much. Um, we're going to adjourn at 9:24 a.m. and we're adjourning to April 26th, 2021, where we'll meet again in a special, uh, teleconference meeting. Thank you all so much. Have a wonderful day. It's going to be gorgeous.
Thanks, Liz.
Thank you.
Thank you.